My live, there we go.
Can you please talk to the timing? Yeah, thank you.
My name is Ross Asselstein, I'm from San Onofre. I'd like to open, this is not my town, but San Onofre and Ross are twin together with the flood control project in San Onofre. County staff is refusing to answer any questions and has said they are going to submit to FEMA this month. This is why Ross and San Onofre get letters of caution from me. The biggest project, this is the biggest project change to the creek in the last 80 years and the implications are considerable. What is coming is going to be a mess to sort through and understand. It's not going to be black and white, it's not going to be just about engineering, it's not going to be something that can be approved after one presentation at one council meeting. It's going to be complex and I will suggest that two or three meetings are going to be required to receive information, listen to comments, ask for answers and input. In the subject of the risk on all the other projects in the flood districts, I've written about that and I've sent a letter to this town, Fairfax, Larkspur and San Onofre as well. Those lists are considerable. I used to protect development companies by looking at risk and running down and making a list of how to address those. The financial committee in San Onofre was looking at it. I would hope Ross would consider it seriously, if anything, just to tell the flood district to do their job as fiduciaries. Thank you for your patience, I know I can be a thorn in the side, but if anything, I hope people know that I've taken my professional experience in retirement and tried to contribute towards this all, mitigating a risk and staying on our arm's way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ross. Anybody else for public comment? Anybody online, Cindy?
There are currently no raised hands online, Mayor.
Okay. Next is the mayor's report. It's almost summer and there's a warm feeling in the air and lovely light in the sky. School is out, graduations are over, college kids are back and vacations are on the horizon. I hope you are savoring this special season. Recently, we have heard that some residents continue to be concerned about the July 1st closure of the Ross Fire Station based on the council's unanimous decision more than four years ago. We are currently working on another communications piece to reiterate these nuanced issues and further explain how our community will remain safe with continuing excellent emergency services from the Ross Valley Fire Department, the Ross Valley Paramedics, who are staying in Ross, the Ross Police and other county providers. In the meantime, more information is available on the town's website, including links to the presentations and PowerPoints from Ross Valley Fire Chief Dan Mahoney, Ross Valley Paramedic Executive Officer and Marin County Fire Chief Jason Weber and Marin Wildfire Executive Officer Mark Brown. Last month, CAL FIRE and Marin Wildfire commemorated Wildfire Preparedness Week at the Bridgewood Firewise Neighborhood in San Rafael and included Assemblyman Damon Connolly. We toured the yards of two homes, excuse me, that had completed the necessary work in Zone Zero, the first five feet from houses and structures most important to protect homes from igniting by flying embers during a wildfire. We also visited Marin Wildfire's San Rafael/San Onofre Fuel Reduction Zone Project, cited in a strategically important location in and surrounding the Mount Tamalpais Cemetery. To reduce wildfire risk and intensity, the project is thinning non-native invasive eucalyptus trees and doing restoration with native species. Also in May, along with many other Marin mayors and council members, I attended the Time to Lead on Climate event in Mill Valley. Congressman Jared Huffman, Marin County Board of Supervisors President Mary Sackett and others spoke about the importance of continuing our local efforts to address climate change and resiliency. Last week, the age-friendly breakfast was a big success and I learned firsthand that Crown and Crumpet makes the best coffee cake in Marin. Director Ron Chief Kush shared information about Marin water, including the many steps it is taking to ensure adequate water is available even during periods of drought. Earlier today, Councilmember Robbins and I enjoyed chatting with residents, starting our new tradition of a council member at the post office from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on the days of our council meetings. Please stop by to see us on July 10th. Next week, you'll see in our inaugural Ross Review Newsletter a column entitled "Heart of Ross Downtown Business Spotlights." Each month, we will be showcasing a downtown Ross business. We will be featuring Maison Marin at 20 Ross Common, a gorgeous store offering unique treasures for your home and garden. And if anyone else would like your business to be included in an upcoming Ross Review Newsletter, please contact me. Happy summer and see you at the Fourth of July Parade. Next, council committee and liaison reports. Reports. Elizabeth.
So Ross Valley Paramedic Authority met last week. Our comments about the lease for the paramedic authority were incorporated into a new lease proposal that has been reviewed by our lawyer because of some personal issues. The lease wasn't ready for the Ross Valley Paramedic Authority meeting last week, but the lease proposal has been delivered to them now.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? I wanted everyone to know that the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority approved its budget in May. It's almost $23 million and Ross will be getting a chunk of that. Next, staff and community reports. Town Manager Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor McMillan. The Town of Ross invites qualified applicants to apply for the Senior Building Inspector position. The deadline to apply is June 27th and you can find more information on the town's website. Dependent upon council authorization on your agenda tonight, we do want to alert residents that the Public Works Department would be starting a major roadway project to repave and restripe Sir Francis Drake Boulevard between Bolinas Avenue and El Camino Bueno, beginning sometime after mid-July this summer. Drivers should expect significant traffic delays for several weeks during construction, so we will make sure we get out information so that everybody can do their best to plan ahead. The actual schedule of the lane closures will not be known until just before construction begins, but we will do everything possible to have all the lanes open before school starts again in August. More information on the lane closer schedule will be released as soon as it's available. This coming Thursday, town offices are closed in honor of the Juneteenth holiday. As an observed holiday in the Town of Ross, no construction activities may take place. On Wednesday, June 25th, at 5:00 p.m., the Ross Valley Fire Department is holding a badge-pinning ceremony for 11 new or promoted employees. That's a big group, so it'll be a good ceremony. It will be held at the department's headquarters located at 777 San Onofre Avenue in San Onofre. This is fun, the annual Town of Ross Fourth of July Parade and Celebration is right around the corner. The celebration takes place on what day? Exactly, July 4th from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The parade kicks off the celebration. This year, it is one hour earlier than it usually is, so this is a bit of a change. So, one hour earlier at 10:00 a.m., the Ross Police Department, the Fire Department, marching bands, music, Uncle Sam, esteemed members of the Ross Town Council, dogs on parade and floats of all shapes and sizes will show their patriotic spirit. And then a community picnic celebration on Ross Common follows the parade. For those inquiring minds, the music will be Elena Keating and R&B All-Stars and our very own Shady Ladies Choir. Food and drinks, there will be complimentary popcorn, free hot dogs by the Ross Police Officers Association and food and drinks for purchase from Johnny's Donuts, Chef Big Jim's Barbecue and Kona Ice. Also a change this year, both non-alcoholic and alcoholic beverages will be available for purchase. Following the parade, kids of all ages can enjoy age-appropriate bounce houses, lawn games, grass volleyball and fainting painting, face painting. And new to this year will be the Ross Rodeo Mechanical Bowl, so don't forget to wear your cowboy hat. Maureen wrote this for me, thank you, Maureen. Lastly, staff are excited to put on the Third Annual Patriotic Pooch Dog Contest. Top dogs from each category will win prizes. Sign up for the Patriotic Pooch Contest by going to rossrecreation.org or by calling Ross Rec. You too can volunteer and be an important part of this event. Ross Recreation is looking for volunteers. You can join me at the popcorn booth. To help with the parade lineup and activities, call or email Ross Rec and/or walk in the parade. We would like to see your patriotic spirit come through on your floats, bikes and cars. Parade registration is open. Sign up at rossrecreation.org or by calling Ross Rec. Again, the parade will begin at what time? 10:00, yes, 10:00 a.m. So, and last but not least, I'm excited to announce the launch of our revamped monthly e-newsletter, which is called the Ross Review. The new publication will be emailed out on Tuesday after the monthly council meeting. Folks that want to subscribe, if you haven't, if you're not subscribing now, just please either call or send a request to our town clerk, Cindy Martell. So it's cmartell@townofrossca.gov. And that's it for me, thank you for the opportunity to report.
Thank you, Manager Johnson. Next is the Ross Property Owners Association, Andy Mascheroni.
Good evening, Mayor McMillan and Ross Town Council. I'm Andy Mascheroni, member of the Ross Property Owners Association, here to give you a rundown on what we've been up to and what we plan to do. First of all, regarding membership, membership is somewhat a little bit down this year, but we are encouraged because we're going to send out a membership mailing and last year it was very successful, so we hope to increase the number of members. Next, regarding age-friendly Ross events, I guess the mayor already mentioned the wonderful age-friendly breakfast, it's a very nice event, everyone was very happy and it was very successful. Then, we also were discussing the fact that in the LA fires, 90% of the fatalities occurred for individuals over the age of 70. And so we're attempting to put together a database of individuals that might need assistance during emergencies, not necessarily a certain age, but just get an idea of who might need assistance. Then, we are going to be sponsoring an emergency response training class. It's tentatively scheduled for September outside Ross Commons. We're being assisted by the Corvada Emergency Response Team, an individual named Peter Mizolas, very nice individual. The event will be medical training for 20 to 30 people through three workstations for 10 to 15 minutes. The goal is to learn how to stop bleeding, CPR and the administration of Narcan. There will be some lead time, we have to order the CPR dummies and get the Narcan from the state and then assemble stop bleeding kits. And then there are a few projects we're conducting. The flowers around the camp, we put those up there and we've hired a service to keep them watered during the summer so they don't die, pretty intelligent. The grass field, there's been a lot of concern about the conditions. The drainage has been corrected, but we still are concerned that there's brown spots popping up and that we're investigating what we can do to remedy that. There are a lot of people that can contribute money, the town, the school, and we're still working on that, but that's a goal, to somehow fix that field. The new lights for the interior of the post office, we've decided to go with that. So we're going to put new lights up on the interior at the entry and also back where the post office is actually operating. Lot of stuff. Oh, there's been an issue about the holiday lights and circuit overload and we tried to get a PG&E irrigation electric box hooked up, but that has proved impossible, so we're trying to set up an alternative to get some additional power for the lighting. We're actually going to ask the post office to place a smaller table on one side of the lobby and bolt it down for safety during earthquakes. We're in the planning stages of establishing an historical Ross Walk and this will be a historical walk through the town. We've tentatively identified 18 prospective locations for the walk. There are five spots that we planned for the initial route and the presentation. We propose to have a small brass plaque located at each site with a QR code that brings you to a written history at a website. We're planning on making a prototype and presenting it to the Architectural Review Committee and then presenting it to you for review and approval. Our last live on the commons was very successful, everyone enjoyed listening to the children and being able to play for their family and friends. Then, we also sponsored a global fair that was very successful in a partnership with Ross School. The August live on the commons will be held, but it will be in September, September 12th, with John Chi and the Pacific Syndicate will be providing the music. There is a photo contest that you can find on our website that is going to be conducted and the photos will be voted on and they'll be erected somewhere, maybe on these walls, but there's currently, a couple of years ago they did it and they're in the post office, those photos, so we're going to put some photos like that. Hopefully, everyone will participate. And then, we are investigating the improvement to the entrance of the Ross Field, maybe putting some flowers or some sort of an entryway, and so we're investigating with an architect, a landscape architect, and we're planning to, of course, be consistent with the Ross Town Plan. And last but not least, we purchased dog poop bags, so that we have, I don't know how many, but lots of them, and we're investigating purchasing a receptacle so they can actually be collected and they'll be picked up by the regular trash pickup. And that's all.
Wonderful, thank you, Andy. Thank you to our POA for all you're doing. Number seven is the consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove any item from the consent? Matt.
I'd like to pull 7F, I believe it is.
Anybody else? Does any member of the public wish to pull an item from the consent? Okay, is there any public comment on items A, B, C?
No raised hands online.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on items A, B, C, D or E? Could we have a motion to approve the consent?
I move, approve consent A through E.
A second.
Mayor McMillan?
Aye.
Councilmember Dowling?
Aye.
Councilmember Kircher?
Aye.
Councilmember Salter?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Robbins?
Aye.
With a vote of five, the motion passes.
Thank you. Item 7F. Rich, is that you?
Yep, that's me. Any specific questions or would you just like me to go over?
So, I mean, it's a big project, so first of all, I just think whatever we have, a project that is going to disrupt the town, like Sir Francis Drake, we should probably just have it as an agenda item. I really appreciate that we want to get out of here quickly, but I just know this is a big project. And per my email, I thought what I'd like to know is what safety enhancements we're trying to make on this section of where Winship is, given the parametrics report we received and how we're going to try to add those items, if it's this time or later, but I didn't see it in the staff report.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Salter, Mayor McMillan, council members, Rich Semen is Public Works Director. Yeah, so, the staff report admittedly has the plans, but they're very small, hard to read, so I fully appreciate this being pulled for a little bit of discussion. So looking at the parametrics report from last year, they did come up with some recommendations for us to follow when we did some improvements to Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. There were three specific recommendations. One was the tree trimming around the southeastern Winship intersection, which we've done some considerable clearing. There is some opportunity for a little bit more clearing of vegetations to open up that intersection a little bit more for sight distance and visibility for cars approaching from on Sir Francis Drake heading westbound. The other, the second item was improved signage and pavement markings. So we did, I did instruct our consultants to take particular attention to both this report and anything else that they could come up with for specific safety considerations. So, what the report recommends is, you know, accentuating the current 30 mile per hour speed limit on Sir Francis Drake, adding the large thermoplastic 30 numbers going each way on the roadway, and we've added, we've added a couple of locations where that occurs on the approach to that Winship Avenue intersection, we've added additional, we've added new 30 mile per hour speed limit pavement icons, if you will, on the asphalt approach on both eastbound and westbound. So they don't show really on the plans that were included in the staff report. We've made some revisions and additions since I had to get this submitted for publication. So, the plans that you have show a single 30 mile per hour on the pavement heading westbound, just a few hundred feet southeast of the Winship Avenue intersection. We've added another one on the eastbound lane, just opposite of that. We also do have a sign in the location of about Station 2775, which is a sign that's noted as T6, which is install a R21 Speed Limit 30 and R48 Radar Enforced Roadside Sign. So we're adding that in addition to the existing slow turn marker, that's a few hundred feet to the east of this one. And to that, we're also going to add the intersection notification sign, it kind of looks like a T, a black T, we're going to add that to this sign as well to indicate that there is an intersection coming up. So that's on the approach from, on westbound Sir Francis Drake towards the bridge. On the bridge itself, we're adding the additional 30 symbols on the pavement going both ways, right on the, right at the center of the span, so those will be seen by the vehicles as they go over the bridge. And then also, on the eastbound approach, we're reinstating the 30 mile per hour pavement marker as well that's there. So, we have, we, staff feels that we have addressed that second item of improved signage and pavement markings on the roadway. They did, parametrics did recommend the W35, a 30 mile per hour speed limit on a sign and we've added that, and a W2-2 intersection warning sign and we added that as well. The final recommendation is periodic traffic monitoring to reassess traffic conditions and the effectiveness of the recommended measures. So we have some pre-existing traffic monitoring reports, so after we do the improvements, we can, we can do another analysis to see how they've improved or as far as accident reports, we can get reports from the police department as well to see if there's been any statistical improvements of incidents of traffic accidents. I think the most significant improvement that you're going to see is that when we do, finish with the repaving and we put in the new pavement delineators and striping, since the last time Sir Francis Drake was paved and striped, Caltrans has increased the required size of the centerline double yellow. It's a lot thicker and wider and then we'll have brand-new reflectors along that centerline. And the white, they call them the fog lines along the edge of the roads, those have also become a lot wider. And what that also does is it'll skinny up the lanes as well, which itself acts as a traffic calming device. So, the lanes will appear slightly more narrow, which will give the perception to the driver that they need to drive a little bit slower during the daytime and especially in night, that roadway, as it curves around across the bridge, will be well lit with these traffic reflectors. It'll be like night and day compared to how it is currently, which is the pavements failed and the reflectors have been broken or smashed away. So it's going to be a huge improvement and I think we'll, we should see some significant benefit from this project and hopefully a lot less occurrences of traffic incidents.
Thank you, that's very helpful. One, the one that I don't see very well addressed was just the trees that are, they're young trees right now, but for people, it was noted in the report, when they're turning left out of Winship onto Sir Francis Drake, the visibility is in red, it's like very bad. And so I hear that you said you cut back, but some of those young trees will also grow into bigger trees and so, I mean, you can just even see in your map all the trees that are the mature trees there, but it's very dangerous for people coming out of Winship turning left.
Yeah, so I understand that the trees that you're talking about, I think they were planted with that corner, the project that was done on the corner of Winship and Sir Francis Drake. I've been talking with my, with Anthony, our tree specialist on our staff, and we're, we are likely going to just remove those trees. We're also going to be grading and reconstructing that ditch that runs between Winship Avenue and El Camino Bueno to improve the drainage there. And I don't think those trees will survive that construction anyway. And then we can reconsider replanting closer to that retaining wall along the property if we want to continue vegetation along Sir Francis Drake. But yeah, those trees are targeted for removal.
Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, that's all the questions I have.
Rich, can you just explain exactly where it's going to start and stop the paving?
Yeah, so, I believe it is 2016 that the entire intersection of Bolinas and Sir Francis Drake was repaved and reconstructed. And that, that new pavement extends about 50 feet to the southeast of the bus stop on, heading towards the bridge on Sir Francis Drake. So we're going to start there. So the intersection of Bolinas and Sir Francis Drake's not going to be, the intersection itself is not impacted by this construction at all. But once you've had, start heading towards the bridge within 100 feet, then the construction's going to begin there. It'll head southeasterly, just past El Camino Bueno for about 200 feet, there's some pretty distressed pavement to the east of El Camino Bueno that we want to fix up and address. So, it'll be just before that big cliff, narrow pinch point on Sir Francis Drake that we're going to stop construction. The reason we're stopping there, we're not going to go all the way to this intersection here, is there's some budget constraints and also we have our undergrounding project for the civic center that's going to require cross-cutting Sir Francis Drake to tie into the utilities over there. So we just thought it's more prudent to do this in a sort of phased approach and get the, actually the worst part of Sir Francis Drake repaved and restriped.
And there's a restriction right now that doesn't allow you to turn left off of Bolinas onto Shady Lane before 9 o'clock. Will that restriction remain in effect while the paving is going on?
We, staff discussed this with Police Chief Potta, that it would be a good idea to waive that restriction and allow left turns during construction on Shady Lane.
Perfect, thank you. Anybody else? Any public comment on this item? Cindy, anybody online? Anybody online to comment?
No raised hands online, Mayor.
Great, so we'll, yep.
Just what, so you said budget cuts, will, are you, is, I know we're going to look at the revised budget. Did your capital plan change to try to find room in future years to do the rest of Sir Francis Drake?
The list of roadways that require paving did change, it has been skinnied down. The repaving of the rest of Sir Francis Drake, I think, should come concurrent with our undergrounding project.
Okay.
You know, when we restore the trench cutting and all that, we can do, we can complete that sometime beyond the scope of the five-year CIP though.
Okay. Thank you, sorry.
Thank you, Rich. Could we have a motion? Do you have something?
I just, one question, so, the work is really being done, trying to fit it into the summer's schedule. The work is being done, trying to fit it into the summer's schedule so that there's not those kids going to school.
Yes.
And will that be true with the rest of Sir Francis Drake? When that's done, you'll try to time it so that there's the least amount of traffic?
Yes. And future phases, hopefully, will have a little bit more lead time in DPW to get a consultant, get a consultant underway, get the drawings out, and get them bid by May, April or so. And, you know, maybe it would straddle fiscal year budgeting, but that, that shouldn't be an issue. We're kind of on a tight, tight constraint here. But my consultants assure me that we, we should be able to get it done by mid-August. And there are liquidated damages in place if they don't, which is legal through the Public Contracts Code. We're allowed to do that as long as it's justifiable. And so we're hoping to get a contract. I made it very clear in the notices that there is a time, there is a time constraint on this project. They need to finish it by mid-August, or there'll be, there'll be penalties, so.
Great. Thanks. Anybody else? Can we have a motion, please?
Okay. I will make a motion that we accept consent Agenda F.
Approve, approve it. 7F.
Yes.
Thank you.
Terry. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Bill?
I second.
Mayor McMillan?
Aye.
Councilmember Dowling?
Aye.
Councilmember Kircher?
Aye.
Councilmember Salter?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Robbins?
Aye.
All right. With a vote of five, the motion passes.
Thank you. Now we're moving to public hearings on planning projects. The first project is 87 Glenwood Avenue. Design review, demolition permit, nonconformity permit, a variance, and Town Council consideration of adoption of Resolution Number 2523.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Tonight, the applicant at 87 Glenwood is requesting approval from the Town Council for design review, a demolition permit, a nonconformity permit, and a variance. The project involves the demolition of an existing nonconforming single-family residence and detached garage. A new two-story, single-family residence with an attached one-car garage is proposed for construction. The new residence will encroach further into the side yard setbacks. The proposed, the project also includes new landscape features to include a new pool and spa, patios, an outdoor fireplace, and a pool enclosure. A variance also, a variance is required to allow the patio of the pool and spa, the fire pit, encroach into the side and rear yard setback, as well as the residence to encroach further into the side yard setbacks. The project went to ADR twice, first on March 18, 2025. During the meeting, ADR members expressed concerns regarding the front yard setback, the location of the pool equipment, and the second-story balcony. The applicant did revise the plans and address the issues. On May 20, 2025, all the ADR members supported the revisions, and majority of the ADR members supported the project. One member did not support the variance request for the side yard setbacks for the main house and suggested the house be narrowed by one or two feet. Staff requests that the Town Council adopt Resolution 2523, approving designer view, a demolition permit, a nonconformity permit, and a variance. Thank you.
Councilmember, questions for staff? Yes, Elizabeth.
I have a question. I know there were concerns about the placement of the pool equipment. And it, it sounds like the, the, what's currently planned is to basically build an underground house for it and bury the pool equipment. And I'd understood that that was going to cost even more than the pool. I just wondered if, if they could, if there's a possibility for the owners to keep working on where the pool equipment might go so that they don't have to underground it at such expense? That's just, you know, is that a possibility?
Yes, Councilmember Elizabeth Robbins. It is a possibility that they can build a pool equipment within that buildable envelope. If for any reason they do want to put it in setback, let's say rear setback or side yard setback, then they are able to apply for a minor exception permit, which allows them to build that pool, that pool equipment enclosure inside our setback. And one of the requirements is to get consent from the adjacent neighbor to do so.
The adjacent neighbor approves the pool equipment location?
Well, doesn't approve it, but I mean, that is one of the conditions of approval for a minor exception. If they wanted to put a, if they wanted to place that pool equipment enclosure there.
Okay.
I, anybody else have a question?
I, I have a question about the, the side setback. And I'm not remembering where we have approved any kind of a structure within four feet of the setback. And this is asking for three feet, two inches on the, on the south side setback. Is there any precedent for us doing that in the past?
Is this for the residents?
Yeah.
That we can think of? No, not for the residents. Maybe for an accessory structure, something like that.
Right. I know we've done it for pools and ADUs, but not for the, the main house. Okay, okay. It's the applicant's turn to make-
Rich, Julie, I have a question.
Oh, yeah.
So what is the current side yard setback? Eight feet, eight inches? And the proposal has it at three feet, two inches, you said?
Three feet, two inches.
Correct.
Did we get the fire department to look at that setback?
They, they did review the, the project, and they didn't, they had no comments.
They had no comments on the, on the side setback?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Thank you. I'll invite the applicant to make any comments that they wish to make.
I didn't have too many comments. I was here just to answer questions, but I could address that a little bit. We did the house at 103 Lagunitas, and it was very similar in that we had to infringe into those setbacks because there's only extremely narrow slice down the middle of the property. There is a garage on the property line right now, which is, is on the property line. The house is a little bit over. But we basically did, started with a modest-sized bedroom upstairs and then the width of the garage, and that's sort of what determined the overall width of the house. So just explaining, so.
Thank you.
I, I believe 103 has a similar situation, but you, we had the same thing, nonconformity and variances and so forth. I, I don't remember exactly the dimensions, but we could look that up for you if you'd like.
I don't think you need to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you. Public comment? Is there anyone online, Cindy, for public comment?
There are no raised hands online, Mayor.
Okay. So let's bring it back for a discussion or a motion. I, I am frankly a little uncomfortable approving this going into the side setback so dramatically, on the one hand. But on the other hand, if the fire department has seen this and doesn't have an issue with it, my issue kind of goes away.
You know, I, I also looked, I guess we all did look at 103 Bolinas, and it's very narrow along the side of that lot, too. I mean, that's just a feature of many of these lots in certain areas of our town, that the, the lots are long but narrow.
Yeah, I agree.
I think one thing to mention is that if one property builds that close to the setback, if the neighbors on the other side at some point in the future want to build right up to the fence, they should be allowed to also. It shouldn't be that whoever gets close to the fence first kind of owns that space. I mean, it, I think we have to, you know, recognize that people are going to be building close to property lines, and it shouldn't be that, you know, one property dictates how neighboring property might build at some point in the future.
I think it depends on the size and the lot of the neighboring property. And I don't think we want to say in a vacuum that-
Well, I don't think that'll come up for this, but it's just something to point out that we just-
Yeah. I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to necessarily agree because I don't know what the situation's going to be. Any other discussion we want to have? Matt?
So I, I know that you're working, Roberta, we've talked about this in the past, for the general plan and sort of updating the zoning. And so this is yet another example of, you know, these small lots. And we, I, I feel like we, with our zoning, we, you know, we don't do a good enough job of trying to create a different set of rules for lots that are different than the large estate lots. So I would just encourage us in our zoning to try to address these issues, if we can, and say, you know, you, you have the hillside lot ordinance was created. It's sort of creating a different carve-out for lots that are smaller and larger lots, or some, some distinction, because we could easily, you know, start mapping our town and saying, hey, these lots are small, or they're odd-sized, and they don't fit with the, the general parameters of the larger sizes. So I, I hope we can address that in the zoning so that these variances don't have to keep coming to us, and then it's very subjective.
Yes, we'll do that. And in terms of the setback to the property line, the building code does also require at least a three-foot setback, so they wouldn't be able to build to the property line.
Thank you.
Okay. Could we have a motion?
I move we approve Resolution 2523.
Mayor McMillan?
Yes.
Councilmember Dowling?
Yes.
Councilmember Kircher?
Aye.
Councilmember Salter?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Robbins?
Yes.
Okay. With a vote of three, five, the motion passes. Sorry.
Thank you. Now we're moving on to 8B, which is 103 Bolinas Road. An amendment to our previously approved variance and Town Council consideration of adoption of Resolution 2524. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Tonight, the homeowner at 103 Bolinas is requesting an approval from the Town Council for an amendment to a previously approved variance. On March 13, 2025, the Town Council approved a 40-square-foot rear addition. However, during the building permit review, the applicant realized that the three-foot extension wouldn't provide enough interior space. So they are now proposing an additional one-foot bump out, adding 14 square feet. This brings the total floor area to 24%, up from the existing 23%. The original approval was also at 24%. So the increase remains within that same range, just a 1% overall change. For context, most lots on Bolinas Avenue have an average FAR of around 30%. And staff requests that the Town Council adopt Resolution 2524, approving the variance amendment.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Matt?
When you originally were looking at this proposal, I'm just curious why this is coming back for such a minor change? So was it that the original proposal, maybe just a little of the-
The big bad lawyer.
Oh.
That's why it's coming back. It was a variance approval. So when you approve a variance and someone then wants to change it, even though it's very minor, and you can't change a variance without having Town Council approve the variance.
Okay. And then when they originally were coming, they didn't envision that they needed this extra square footage? It was only during the building stage? Or I don't, I don't know where they are. How did they figure this out?
That's correct. So when it was designed by a designer or architect, they thought it was enough space. They went through the building plan check process, and through that, they realized they needed another foot, which is 14 square feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Cindy, is the applicant online?
There are no raised hands online.
The applicant is online. John?
Yeah, the applicant is online. I'm just wondering if he would like to make any statement. I think he's in Europe, so it's really late.
Can you, can you hear us, John? Cindy, can you allow him?
Oh, you have to promote him or let him?
Yeah, yeah. I think you mute. Yeah.
Your mic. Cindy, your mic.
John Bozell, please go ahead.
Okay. We're, we're simply here to answer any questions you may have, Mayor McMillan and council members.
You, you need to speak up, John. We can barely hear you.
Okay. We're-
Thank you.
We're, we're here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any questions? Hearing none. Any public comment on this item? Anybody online?
No raised hands online.
All right. We'll bring it back for any further discussion or a motion, please.
I'll make a motion that we approve. I'm sorry. I make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2524.
Is there a second?
Mayor McMillan?
Yes.
Councilmember Dowling?
Yes.
Councilmember Kircher?
Yes.
Councilmember Salter?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Robbins?
Yes.
With a vote of five, the motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you both. That's the end of the public hearings on planning projects. We're moving to the administrative agenda number nine. We are receiving a presentation on the fiscal year ending June 30, 2026 budget, adopting a Resolution 2525, approving the fiscal year 2026 budget, setting the public safety parcel tax rate and amending the town's salary schedule, and adopting Resolution Number 2526, setting the town's appropriations limit as provided in the Government Code, Section 7910, for fiscal year ending 2026, June 30, 2026. Manager Johnson.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. I, I'd like to thank the Town Council and our dedicated staff team, including our consulting accountant, Elizabeth Ford, for the considerable amount of work that you and they have put into the development of the fiscal year ending 26 budget. So as background, the budget is the town's financial plan for the upcoming year, and it includes revenues and expenses related to our town operations and capital improvements. It was developed based on the continuing objectives of providing high-quality services to the community in a fiscally responsible manner. The emphasis continues to be to sustain financial stability as we continue to support the town's goals, including the council's recently adopted eighth goal, which is to provide effective and timely communication with residents. The budget provides current services to town residents as well as new projects and programs that have been discussed by the Town Council during the course of this fiscal year, including the discussion of the capital improvement plan, the five-year financial forecast, and the draft fiscal year ending 26 budget during your April 24 budget workshop. The budget message is at the beginning of the budget document, and that provides a summary of the overall budget. It's located behind Tab A in your budget binder. An attachment to the staff report for this item lists the budget changes that were made to the draft budget document that the Town Council considered during the April 24 budget workshop. So for example, when we published the report and the draft budget almost a couple of months ago, there were quite a few items that had, were outstanding. And now those, and then of course, some of the things that the council or the community brought up at the meeting are reflected and itemized in that list of changes. This is the third year that the budget includes a capital projects fund to pay for the town's civic center campus modernization and rebuilding. By the end of the coming fiscal year 26, the Town Council will have set aside money into the savings account, totaling just under $11.8 million. So that's very significant, and I commend you. Since the council has already spent a significant amount of time on the budget over these past few months, I will keep my comments brief and end here. If there are no questions from the council, the specific actions requested of the Town Council this evening are as described by Mayor McMillan, more specifically to receive this brief presentation, to adopt Resolution Number 2525, which that resolution approves- this brief presentation, to adopt Resolution Number 2525, which that resolution approves the fiscal year ending 26 budget. It sets the public safety parcel tax rate, and it amends the town's salary schedule. We are also asking you to consider adopting Resolution 2526, which sets the town's appropriations limit for fiscal year ending 26, and that's a requirement by the state of California to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Matt?
So I have a couple of questions. The first was on the, on the fire budget. There are some items that are being budgeted for that seems like they would go away once the stations closed, particularly the maintenance, the insurance. Sorry, let me just find the page. It's Section I. So it's maintenance and repairs, insurance, and then the rents for the facility's trailer that the firemen are sleeping in.
Yes. So, thank you, Councilmember Salter. You are correct. We, so maintenance and repairs, $10,000. Well, we still have, the paramedics are still going to be living in the fire station building.
Right.
And tell our, so we need to have a modest amount of money if they've broken window, HVAC, something. So that's, that's what that is for. You can see it's been reduced by 50%. We still have to ensure, we have to ensure the building.
Okay.
We've got it, got to do that. And then the, the rent for the trailer, we shouldn't have to spend this. I'm, we have to disconnect as soon as the firefighters move out of the trailer. We just have to disconnect the utilities. We've already met with the company that owns it, figured out what we have to do, and our staff is scheduling its removal for right after 4th of July weekend. And then at that time, we won't have to pay rent anymore. So that will be a, we'll have that. We won't have to, we won't need all that money, hardly any of that. Yay.
So hopefully that rent will, because it actually was budgeted higher than the last fiscal year. So I think maybe.
Yeah, we just didn't know for sure, and we, we budget very conservatively, and so these, you know.
Yeah, I was pointing it out, it's probably.
Yeah, that'll be a nice $20,000 savings, yeah.
And then on the actual amount of savings from Ross Valley Fire Department, about $200,000. How did you guys quantify that? Is that something that came from Ross Valley Fire Department, or how did you come up with that?
It is, and it's all laid out in the amended JPA agreement. And just a moment, let's see here. When... During my budget presentation to the council on April 24th, I had information. If you'll bear with me just a moment. Okay, so the fire department budget is our largest expense. Closure of Station 18 on June 30th generates a savings to the Joint Powers Authority that will be applied to Ross's dues for us to be members. The savings is expected to be $323,000 in fiscal year ending 26. So that number was provided by Chief Mahoney and the Finance Director of San Anselmo, who services the finance officer for the JPA. So before that savings credit is applied, the costs for Ross were expect, and for all members, was expected to increase a little bit over 3% just, and that was not counting into the labor, a new labor agreement with the firefighters and the battalion chiefs is being finalized, but it has not been approved by the board. The fire board will be likely approving that soon, perhaps in their July meeting. So we won't know for sure. So due to the anticipated credit, the fire department expenses are budgeted at $3 million, which is a decrease. So what was, the way that it was calculated, the savings, that savings, a little bit of the savings is coming from the fact that Ross will not be required to put in as much money into the equipment replacement fund, because we won't have a fire station here. So I think that was, I think that's about $45,000 in savings. So most of the savings is coming from the attrition of, so the way that the fire department is going to be structured is they, they won't need as, they won't, they'll have, they won't have as many positions. So the, so the positions are changing from being firefighters to firefighter paramedics, and then they don't need as much command staff, because they're only going to have three stations instead of four. So those changes are going to generate a savings. And what the positive, positive thing was, is that those changes were expected to take place over quite a few years, but because of the attrition has been faster than they expected, we are going to be realizing the savings, 90%, of the savings, literally on day one, when the station closes, and then the rest of the savings, we are expected to achieve just this spring. So that's, that's... Chief Mahoney has also done a really good job of, you know, holding positions open, not hiring them right away, really trying to generate the savings as quickly as possible.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Public comment on this item?
Sorry, I have another one that I was letting people. Sorry, I know people. So on the capital plan, I just wanted to understand a little more of the undergrounding project. It's very, very, very expensive. So I'm just wondering, is it something we have to do? I know that part of the project was putting in the four-way intersection at Laurel Grove, and so that sort of necessitated this undergrounding, but it's just the budget for it is 2.6 million. So I just want to make sure this is something we really, really want to do when, you know, we're talking about having some budget cuts on the roadways, and I'm like, they're spending so much just to underground the wires.
Turn it over to Rich, please.
Yes. Thank you, Town Manager. So, well, first off, there are two entirely, the roadway fund and the facilities fund are two entirely different funding sources, and they come from different, you know. So that's the primary thing. So it, you know, it's up to, again, the, our governing board, whether, you know, we want to move forward with this, but staff recommendations are that we do take advantage of our accumulated Rule 28 credits, which PG&E, my recent meetings with them, they're, they're on board for obligating those credits. Once we are underway with the project, we have a lot of upfront costs we have to first come up with, and the Rule 28 credits, which are approaching $300,000, are a sort of a reimbursable mechanism. They don't give it to us until we've made progress on, on the project itself. You know, there are aesthetic benefits, of course, to undergrounding the overhead utilities here, and primary is, as you mentioned, the intersection of Laurel Grove. We want to turn that into a four-way intersection, and then there is a pole that's right there that's going to need to be moved either way. We either, you move a pole, and that's, well, five years ago is $100,000 per pole, but that's probably gone up a bit. And then you, you still have to reconfigure the traffic lights and things like that. So again, staff recommends that we do move forward with this project for aesthetic and functionality purposes, to move forward with our Civic Center project. And hopefully that answers your question.
May I add, so in some communities, there is a push to underground for wildfire prevention. Do you have any comments on that? Is there, are there transformers, or is there anything that drops down off those lines? There's also, you know, during a wildfire or during an emergency, the poles come down, right, and that inhibits ingress and egress evacuation. So oftentimes, undergrounding is part of a disaster preparedness or an evacuation effort, but it is, it is expensive.
Yeah, that's correct. There are, there are transformers on at least one of the poles out here. And yeah, every time you can underground your electrical facilities, you are improving fire safety for the community in the area that the undergrounding occurred.
And then, I'm not sure, and maybe Chief Pata can opine here, is if here, is there an issue with motorists hitting the poles? Is that a problem? That is a problem in other communities on highly traveled roads. So by undergrounding them, right, there's not as likely to hit them.
Yes.
In a nutshell, yes, that is a problem. We haven't had one yet this year, but we do have them. And the bigger problem is during inclement weather, wires coming down and make the roadway impassable until PG&E can respond. So there's a hazard associated with that.
Thank you, Chief, and the, and the hazards to emergency responders when they have to come in. And I know that last year in Fairfax, there was an issue with that, with, with employees. So anyways, those are usually the, those are the benefits of an undergrounding project, but absolutely expensive, expensive, and, and the costs are rising quickly.
Just to be clear, the 2.6 million total project, does that include the 300K of credits or not?
It does, does not. I think the credits we left out, because they are, you know, it's, we are conservative as the Town Manager mentioned. We don't want to throw in funding that may or may not be there. So we're, again, my recent conversations with, with PG&E have raised my hopes considerably that they're, they're on board with it, and they're going to obligate that money. So I think the 300,000 would be in the revenue part, and the 2.3 million is the expense. Yeah.
With the caveat that you're not going to get the final numbers until it goes out to bid for construction.
Correct.
Right. So it's very likely that cost is going to go up.
What's our schedule to, to send this out for bid?
I think that does occur with... That should happen around 2027, 2028, I believe.
I thought we were doing this sooner rather than later, the undergrounding. Maybe I'm misremembering.
That's so soon from now.
2027?
It's already 20, it's already the middle of 2025, and we've, and you're doing right now is the contract for the design work?
Yeah, we've, we're under contract with a, with a consultant to start the, the design work, and we, we're under contract. We haven't really moved forward until we've got another meeting with PG&E for scoping within, in the next couple of months.
The holdup, can I say, is, is oftentimes, it's, it's the utilities. It's the utilities, and you've been reading in the paper about how much the utilities are holding back development projects. They're busy, and they probably, and they prioritize. Hopefully ours will be a priority, especially if it's a safety project.
Yeah. It seems to be a priority. They like the size of it. It is a relatively small undergrounding project in their, in their books, and they seem pretty enthused about it. They, hopefully will get good cooperation with PG&E on that.
Anybody, any more questions, Matt, or anybody else? Public comment on this item? Anybody online?
No raised hands online, Mayor.
Okay. So any further discussion? Matt?
So I just, the, the one item is this undergrounding. It's so terribly expensive. I, I 100% understand why we want to do it. It's good. It's good work, all the positives, but for $2.3 million, it's such a high price tag for our community. I mean, we, we say, you know, we, we don't have money for other things, but 2.3 million just to take the utilities underground seems like a luxury, like a big luxury, that, I mean, it's just so much money relative to our, you know, saved up $10 million. It's 20, almost 30% of the money we've saved up is going to just this one project to underground the utilities. And it just seems like a luxury item. I get it's pretty, and it's better for wildfire and all the pauses, but for the cost, I can't even imagine how many, how many, like, square feet we're talking about here. It's got to be through the roof, just how much it's costing just to go for this short amount of distance. So I really hope we can just talk about this, because it's a lot of money. And it's, and this, sorry, this year's budget needs half a million, 500K. So it's, it's like the outlays are starting.
One thing to consider in, in undergrounding, and what we've done in the past, is we did underground Ross Common, our downtown, somehow came up with the money to do a complete undergrounding of utilities through our downtown. Winship Park somehow paid for undergrounding of the, the lower part of, of Winship Park, and then Laurel Grove also somehow funded an undergrounding back then. And so those are the things to consider, that if, once we get it over with, staff believes that it's going to be worth the expenditure, and the, and the ease of completing the Civic Center project will be, will be greatly improved. And I think we'll be happy that, that we've spent the money to do it.
So if we, approving the budget tonight, does that commit us to this, or could we talk about this at some future date?
The capital improvement program is flexible. It's stated in the, in the narrative that, you know, we, we go year to year, and we look at any new budget constraints or any new policy changes or that sort of thing.
Thank you, Councilmember Robbins, but, you know, as Councilmember Salter brought up, I mean, we're, it's, it's ramping up. So if this is, if the, if the consensus of the council is to not, is if you're, you want more information, you want a separate agenda item, we can actually, we can absolutely bring that back. The sooner the better, because we don't want to spend, we wouldn't want to spend more money continuing to do work on this project if the council is having doubts about it. So if the consensus of the council is to, I don't, I think you can keep it, you can keep it in this budget, in the capital improvement budget, but ask us to come back with an agenda item, and then based on that discussion, we, we could remove it, or we could keep it, or...
I mean, I think, I think that's reasonable. I mean, I think it'd be good to pass this, but I, I mean, it is an important, it is a big expense, and I don't, I don't mind confirming that that's what we really want to do, you know, within a session where we have a little more time to talk about it, have a little more background.
Well, work is already in progress to move ahead. I wouldn't want to have things stop, like your discussions with PG&E. I wouldn't want them to stop until we talk about this further at some future meeting. I also think that, I'm, I'm, I care less about the beauty of it, but I think the dealing with fires and the safety and the disaster preparedness perspective makes perfect sense to me. And I think if we wait another two years, three years, four years, cost goes up. I would say, we've talked about this, let's just do it.
Bill, do you have anything to say?
I just, I, I think what, what I think is significant is that you have power lines in front of the public safety building, and as I understand it, public safety personnel will not cross a downed power line unless they're... they're assured that it's de-energized for obvious reasons. So if we have an earthquake, that's when those things are coming down, or some of them, or a tree, or something else. And if our police vehicles were stuck or ambulance were stuck, more concerned about police, the firehouse is closing. But, you know, I just think we do need to protect the access for the public safety people. And those lines run right in front of our public safety buildings. So that's what I think is the most significant. I mean, I'm shocked that the cost is so high. We've always been talking about 1.2 million or 1.4 million. And now to hear that that's doubled, it's really concerning. But I do think it's important to make sure we have access to our public safety people, particularly in an earthquake.
I've spent the last three weeks reviewing town council meeting minutes from, starting in 1979 until basically 2019. And one thing that has become clear to me is no council has been able to deal with these issues. They're very difficult. And I do not want to be in a position where in 15 or 20 years, Matt, when you're still on the council, that you or others are looking back saying, why didn't they do the right thing? I think we need to do the right thing so that we're not back here in 50 years or 75 years. We need to do the right thing for the next 100 years. Because starting in 2005, the council was doing a facilities assessment to turn the fire station into office buildings and move the fire department off-site in 2005, 20 years ago. And then the flood happened. And then the general plan said, let's address the facilities. So they had a goal. And then they were, they were going to form in 2010 a Blue Ribbon Commission. Then the council member who was spearheading that got off the council. And so three years went by. And then the town manager was like, yeah, we're going to address these facilities. That was in 2013, reading this, thinking, oh, this is really going to happen. Then the next meeting is an introduction of an interim town manager because the prior town manager left. So it's just been one thing after another for 20 years. And I think it is really expensive, but we have to do it right. And it's too hard to do, to compromise. We have to do it right so that the town is in good, a good shape for the next 75 to 100 years and so that no one else has to deal with these kinds of issues. So my view is we should just keep going.
So I, I mean, I think it's clear that the majority of the council are okay to go ahead with this without talking about it more. So I would move we approve resolution 2525.
Ben, do we need to do two separate motions?
Oh, also then 2526.
Thank you. Can we have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Mayor McMillan?
Yes.
Councilmember Dowling?
Yes.
Councilmember Kircher?
Yes.
Councilmember Salter?
No.
Council, Mayor Protem Robbins?
Yes.
With a vote of four to one, the motion passes.
Thank you. Item number 10, it is recommended that the town council receive and review the Ross Police Department 2024 Annual Military Equipment Report and adopt resolution number 2527, renewing ordinance number 715 regarding Town of Ross Military Equipment Use Policy. Chief Pata?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, town manager. Once a year, the state requires that I submit to you an annual report regarding our military equipment. We first had, our first meeting about this on June 16th of 2022, and really nothing has changed. We do not have any military equipment at the Ross Police Department. However, we do use, from time to time, we're required to have some assistance from outside agencies that do. So in the report that I've submitted to you with my staff report, there are two incidents. One that occurred on April 13th of 2024, where the Marin County Sheriff's Department came into our town and used a unmanned aerial vehicle, which is considered military equipment, to help us search for a missing person in our town. The second occurred on November 2nd of 2024, where a planned protest in town came to a state politician's home here in town. And his protection detail has military weapons and they stayed on the private property and did not enter into the public area. So they did respond and they, like I said, they stayed on the other side of the wall. They didn't come out into the public. And that was it for us. And that's really the end of my report. There really is not much more to report.
Thank you. Any questions? Public comment? Anybody online?
No raised hands online.
Great. Bring it back for a motion?
Yes. I move that we approve resolution number 2527, renewing ordinance number 715 regarding the Town of Ross Military Equipment Use Policy.
Second?
Thank you.
Mayor McMillan?
Yes.
Councilmember Dowling?
Yes.
Councilmember Kircher?
Yes.
Councilmember Salter?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Robbins?
Yes.
With a vote of five, the motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Pata.
You're welcome.
Number 11, no action items. Council correspondents, anybody? Future council items? Oh, yes.
So I received some feedback about the ADR process from a towns person that went through the process and felt that it was not the friendliest experience. So I was hoping that, well, I mean, Terry and I also are new to the council, but I don't know how frequently we meet with ADR or have it as an agenda item to sort of talk with them about how ADR is going. And if there's any improvements we can collectively make or have also the community's input for how to make the process go smoother and less expensive. I've brought this up before, but every time that somebody has to go back to ADR, you know, they have to pay for that. And so it's, I think that the people that, you know, my age are a lot of the ones building in town right now. And so I think I probably just hear more of it than maybe the rest of you. But it's, I think it's worth revisiting with them or just even having just a discussion of an agenda of, hey, how could ADR be improved? How can we make the process easier or more efficient so that people feel like they can get their projects through it? Anyway, I just opened that up as a potential item.
You know, one thing that comes to mind is maybe this is something that ADR could put on their agenda as just like an annual review or something, and we could join their meeting. I guess only two of us could join their meeting, but, but, you know, it's, or maybe there could be a couple of specific suggestions that people have shared with you. People have shared a few with me also. And maybe we share that with ADR and then let ADR discuss it at one of their meetings. I'm not really sure what the format should be. There certainly are a couple of, you know, one of the comments that I had heard was a person who contacted me said that, that some more back and forth about the projects would be valuable instead of the kind of format where there's a presentation, public hearing, and then it's back to the ADR to discuss, just the way we have that sort of format for our meetings. This person recalled that in days past, there was more back and forth and time to kind of work out details. And that seemed like a very valid concern. And I don't know if it could be addressed, but, but there are things like that that I've heard. And it would be helpful if we can see what ADR thinks about a few of the suggestions we've heard and if there are ways to make everyone happy. I'm not quite sure what the format should be.
Yeah, I worry about having this on our agenda and, you know, kind of telling what, telling ADR comments and making them do stuff. I think it should be coming from ADR. And maybe there's a way for people to give feedback to Roberta and you could work with ADR rather than having it on the council agenda.
Or maybe two council members could meet with two ADR people and go over some of the, some of the comments that we've heard.
My idea would be, is having, it would be that staff would, Roberta presumably would come back to us with, hey, as a topic, like here's how ADR functions, here's sort of, you know, best practices, maybe things she's seen and staff has seen as improvements. And then it would be, you know, open it up to the town for public comment and people, the ADR can come. The reason I'm doing this is because so many people have to go through this process. And we are the ones that, at the end of the day, we have to own it because it's sort of a, they aren't, they're not the planning commission. Otherwise, we delegate it completely and say, you're the planning commission. But we are really, they're advising us. And so I don't, when I'm hearing so much feedback and the cost, again, how many, every project, as Roberta knows, has gone two times or three times through this process, is very expensive and very time consuming. And they have to redo their plans and that's very expensive as well. So how we can make that more efficient for our townspeople is really the goal. And because we are the, we are the people that decide, we have to do this. It's not like you can just tell ADR, go put this on your agenda because we're the ones at the end of the day who decide.
I sort of agree with Julie that it's a little awkward on our agenda. I sort of see it almost like as a, you know, a senate hearing about the ADR, people in process, and they provide such a service to us. I do think that there's, should be some way of, of having a list of the concerns that people have raised and then providing that list to somebody, whether it's Roberta to share with ADR or a council member to share with ADR and then hear back from ADR. But I don't, I don't think I'd start with a council meeting because I feel like it's, it's like putting ADR on this, like, almost like they did something wrong. What were you going to say, Julie?
And I'm hearing some comments from people on ADR that they're, you know, it's a hard, it's a really hard job. And it's becoming more and more difficult with the ADUs and how, you know, we're letting pools slip into more and more of the setbacks. And it's, it's just a really hard job. And so I don't want to, I think we need to be, we need to step gingerly to preserve the relationship. And Matt, before, long before you moved here, there was no ADR. And so people would come to the town council where there were no architects, there were no engineers, and the council would spend three or four hours revising people's plans, you know, as amateurs. And it was really very inefficient. And they would come back over and over and over because what the town council was doing was so unprofessional and inadequate. And so ADR was the, was the way to solve, you know, the amateur hour of the council trying to design these projects and resolve neighbor disputes and everything like that. So it is an improved process. Maybe there's some bumps in the road that can be smoothed out, but I would rather do those kind of offline rather than, and then if it continues, then we can reevaluate. But I think your feedback is good to, maybe Roberta and Krista can work together to figure out how to address some of the issues.
So then maybe we could, I mean, does that make sense to work through Roberta and people who've had, you know, people who've been contacted and have, know of concerns, show those with Roberta who could then share with ADR? I mean, I think, I think that's a good start.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not what you were thinking, Matt, but I think it's a good start. What do you think?
I was going to say, I really appreciate the, what you brought up. And nobody's come to me talking about the ADR. But I think it's important that we hear from, I think it's important that we hear, thank you, I think it's important that we hear from people who've had experience, good and not so good. But I also think it's important that we hear back from ADR members, like what's working and what's not working, so that we can support them to do the best job possible. And I think the process most likely fits best with the staff to do that, to do that assessment of what's working and not working, both for the people who are serving on the ADR and also people who have had experiences, good or bad, with the ADR. And I would think, I would encourage those of us who, who may be hearing from people that this is not working for me, or this is too expensive, or it's taking too long, to let Roberta know.
Yeah, so I hear, first of all, I want to make it very clear, I support the ADR very much. And I've actually said we should include them in our parties. And I know every member and have a great relationship. So it has nothing to do with them and it has nothing to do with the function, which I think really offloads a ton from our plate. What this has to do with is how, because they aren't the planning commission, they advise us. So how can we get feedback? And maybe it is Roberta could provide a report. Maybe it's an agenda item that she says, here's the update on the ADR. But we have to have a way of, just like we have on the flood zone, I was asking for our representative to come forward. We have to have a way of communicating and understanding how a process is working and how it isn't and how it can be improved. I'm glad ADR was created. That's the benefit of all of you to bring the foresight to make that committee. But when, you know, we have to have a way of monitoring and allowing feedback so we can improve the process. And if we don't believe that it can be improved, that's the problem. We need to, you know, solicit feedback and be able to improve it.
Yeah, I'm not saying it can't be improved. I'm just saying that I think we need to be careful about the process we choose to, to, you know, provide feedback to them. So we're probably getting too far into our discussion, aren't we, Ben?
I mean, there probably aren't two people who want it on the agenda. I mean, I said, there probably aren't two people who want to put this on the agenda. So then we work on, you know, how we work with Roberta.
Can move on.
Yeah, so I would just say, Roberta, hopefully this is something that staff can look at. I will be happy to bring it back because it is not, this is not a new thing that I've heard. It's a repeated, you know, issues with, again, the cost and the time and the process. I don't know if it could be improved, but it's worth taking up at some point.
I just wanted to point out that we do, the council has a new eighth goal. Provide effective and timely communication with residents. And I see this as being a part of that goal because residents are participating in the process, residents are on the ADR, residents are on the council. So I'd be more than happy to work with, with staff and with the chair of the ADR to work on this, including survey. Survey, after somebody goes through their project, how did it go?
Great. Thank you. Okay. Any, any other future council items? Okay. Last is, who would like to be at the post office on Thursday, July 10th before our next meeting? Actually, Elizabeth and I had a lovely time. The time went by really fast. Anthony and Zach set up the table and a tablecloth and we had a lot of fire, fire safe Marin materials and Marin wildfire materials and also how to sign up for Alert Marin. Currently, Ross has 60% of our residents signed up. We're the highest in the county, but that still means 40% are not signed up. So we need to work on that. Is anyone available? Great. Thank you, Matt. Last is meeting evaluation. Comments about the meeting?
I thought it went fine. I don't really have any comments.
I thought it went fine, too. I thought we did a really good job of listening to each other.
Okay. All right. With that, we are adjourned at 7:30. Thank you.
It's still light out.
Yeah. I know. It's great.